I love the obedient crowd. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, July 17th, 2018. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham, Councilmember Dorman, here. Councilmember Mohler, here. Vice Mayor Dornbecker, here. Mayor Dunbar.
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is adoption of tonight's agenda. Your motion to do so.
So moved.
I think we're going to try the electronic voting to make sure it's working.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, we're one for one, Michelle. Going well.
That's always a good one. The next one will be the hard one.
Okay.
Be prepared.
Next, first of two proclamations, actually certificates of appreciation. We have a couple of our community members that we get to recognize tonight for their service to Yountville and our community. I'd like to first invite up Karen Laz to the podium so that I can present a proclamation recognizing her service on our zoning and design review board. And not just proclamation.
More wine.
I'll hand this over to you right away. So let's slide over just a little bit so I can speak into the microphone. This is a certificate and bottle of appreciation in recognition of Karen Laz, zoning and design review board. The town council and staff express a sincere thank you for your contributions and service to the town of Yountville as a member of the zoning and design review board from July 2013 to July 2018.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
I feel like this wine's going to be incredible. I can't wait to try it. Thank you so much for your support and I really enjoyed being a part of the community in this way for the last five years. And as I said in my resignation letter, that it kind of came with a heavy heart, but as my time that I'm spending now more with creating the nonprofit that I've started for Alzheimer's research, there's just so much time in a day and I am starting to really spend more time doing that with my community service time, so. But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite Barbara Allen to join me at the podium. Should I give this to Dick or you want? You did all the work. Also, this is a certificate and bottle of appreciation in recognition of Barbara Allen on the zoning and design review board. The town council and staff express a sincere thank you for your contributions and service to the town of Yountville as a member of the zoning and design review board from August 2015 to July 2018. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. It was a privilege and honor to serve. I enjoyed it. I want to thank the planning department gave us the utmost support. They did everything. It was easy after what they done, but it was a pleasure to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to recognize Jared Denton. He's not able to be with us this evening, but he will be receiving a certificate of appreciation as well. And I'm sure, Michelle, we have his bottle of wine somewhere safe. If I could pass this over to Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I get to invite, where is Samantha? In the back. I get to invite Samantha up so we can, I can make a presentation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. So please. I want to know how you're going to pull off taking the picture like you don't want to take the pictures.
Last year I did a selfie.
We could do the selfie thing, yeah. This, okay. This is a proclamation designating July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of our community and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in Yountville, encouraging the good health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our community. Whereas parks and recreation activities provide opportunities for all people to gather, explore, exercise, and create community. Whereas the town of Yountville Parks and Recreation Department's mission is to offer healthy, cost-effective, and innovative activities and spaces for the community to enjoy. Whereas the town of Yountville Parks and Recreation Department offers 41 different classes and programs, 28 free special events. 28 free special events? We didn't, that didn't come up in our budget conversation? Yes, it did. 10 different rental facilities serving an estimated 53,000 people annually. Whereas parks and recreation areas are vitally important to the environmental well-being of our community, improve water quality, protect groundwater, improve the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and ensure habitat for wildlife. Whereas the town of Yountville maintains a well-loved park and trail system comprised of 13 acres of parkland in eight parks and four miles of paths and trails visited by tens of thousands of residents and visitors each day, each year. Each day, that's a lot of people. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the town of Yountville recognizes and celebrates the benefits derived from parks and recreation areas and services, as well as the people that make it all happen. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor, on behalf of the Yountville Town Council, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Yountville. Congratulations. Let's go this way.
One more. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I'll just say a few words. So this is, it's always an exciting time in July, just to kind of give us some recognition of what we work so hard for all year long with all of your support. I was thinking today that it's difficult for you all sometimes because people talk a lot about trying to bring resident-focused, resident-serving things to Yountville, and some of it you can control and some of it you can't. It's hard to bring a grocery store or a pharmacy here to Yountville, those private-type businesses, but what you do do is invest and believe in what we do in parks and recreation that really makes us a community that people enjoy living in. And so I want to thank you for that effort and support that you've given us in my eight years here to really build what I am so proud of and the team that I am so proud of. So Lisa Tyler's here tonight. She's our facilities manager. Jennifer Carvalho, who is our recreation supervisor. And we have a couple of our Parks and Recreation Commissioners here, our Chair Sandy Fagan and our Vice Chair Verlin Schommer. So thank you guys for your support. And what you don't see in my department is named Parks and Recreation, but the partnership that goes on with our Public Works Department that is so integral in everything that we do, and Joe here, that's our Public Works Director. But not here tonight, Stacy Nunley Diaz, Nunley, ooh, is our front desk administrative assistant. Garrett Kuhl is our recreation coordinator. Ryan Hill, who is one of our maintenance people in the Public Works Department. Juan Castillo, also in Public Works. Larry Hancock, who is our Public Works Manager. Leo Martinez. Jim Nguyen. Debbie Height. And then Gabe, who is our seasonal person that keeps it all clean. So there's a lot of people that not just work in our parks, that assist us in keeping our facilities running smoothly, too. They're always, always there when we call, which is quite often. So I just want to make sure those people are also recognized during Parks and Recreation Month, but all year long, we do a lot of different things for this community, and you know, you read a few of them in here, but what separates us from a lot of other things that go on here in town is that first and foremost, we're here to serve our Yountville residents. And thank you all for your support in doing that and the community for loving it. We can't always please everybody, but we sure heck try. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much to all of our staff that's here and those that aren't here tonight, but we appreciate every single day all that you do for us and our community. So thank you. It's your community, too, after all. Next up, our item six is public comment on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Anyone here for that? Seeing no one moving forward, we'll move right ahead to consideration of our consent calendar. We have two items on consent. Is there a motion or discussion? Anyone choosing to push the motion button? Now would be the time.
Make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Thank you.
One second.
Please vote. There we go, Michelle.
That's pretty good.
You're excited right now, aren't you?
Pretty excited.
Hold on, we're moving. Okay, we're going to move ahead now. Let's see, do we have our CAL FIRE? Do not see them. Probably out protecting our safety. If we do get a CAL FIRE representative, we'll check in on their quarterly report. I do see that we have our sergeant here, Sheriff's Public Safety Quarterly Report. Sergeant, welcome.
Good evening. For CAL FIRE, but the sheriff's department is here, so.
Give them a hard time a little bit later about that.
Yes. Good evening.
You better double-check the NICSIL before you do that just to make sure they're not...
Yeah, they may be literally fighting a fire, so I don't want to give them too hard of a time. So in the last quarter, we had 924 calls for service in the town of Yountville. We did 51 written investigative reports. One of the things that you don't see in that, well, obviously, I guess you can see, is that we're roughly at 1,000 calls for service, just below it this last quarter. And so there is a lot of, lot of items that get done or things that aren't considered investigative reports, typically working with the other departments within the town. We made seven arrests, lined up with these written investigative reports. Crimes against persons, simple assaults are down from this quarter last year, and we had zero domestic violence incidents, which is fantastic. And I would like to think that over the last probably five to six years, that's due in part to a lot of the education that's been done throughout our state and with all of our citizens. There's been a lot of programming and education that's taken place surrounding cycles of violence and domestic violence. And that's just, that's fantastic because I know when I started over 20 years ago, this was not the case. Crimes against property, basically theft-type crimes are also decreased. They're down over 25% from this quarter last year. I did want to kind of touch on the mail theft and theft from vehicle incident we had this last quarter. Currently, just an update, we have, well, I said two suspects identified. There's actually three identified, and we have some pending warrants for their arrests, and we have the investigators for the sheriff's office and some other peers that are currently paying attention to these individuals and working this out for us. Steve Rogers and I are also working on some different plans to use technology and innovatively protect our community from this type of event. And we'll, I'll follow up with you guys on that, probably the next report or probably before. Traffic collisions, we had three non-injury accidents, so basically the same as last quarter. These are typically fender benders. It is down from the same quarter last year. Traffic stops, 183 stops this quarter. It's up from last quarter, but I don't want to stand up and cheer too much because last quarter had different weather. It is down from last year, and I hold a pretty high standard for us that get to work up here on traffic stops and education and our one-third enforcement. But due to our incident that we had at the vet's home, I had some staffing issues, as you can imagine, for a little while, and that did affect traffic stops and ped checks this last quarter. Some of the community involvement, one of the things that I was pretty excited about working with Napa Valley Community Housing is we were able to do our first bilingual coffee with the cops, and I was able to use one of my graveyard deputies who was bilingual, and we were able to work with them. Because one of the things, as I've talked to different staff members with Napa Valley Community Housing, it started to bother me, I saw a trend over the last year where we had residents that are Spanish-speaking only that were afraid to call us or afraid to report things because of different things going on in the government. And it's not acceptable. So we were able to reach out, and I contacted the managers at Napa Valley Community Housing and said, hey, how about we start doing coffee with the cops, barbecues, start building some relationship with us so they know us by first name, and they feel a little more comfortable saying, instead of thinking that something bad will happen, they can say, hey, John, this is what's going on, is that okay? How do I prevent this? Start using us as the resource that we really are, that you pay us to be. And so I'm pretty excited. I'm optimistic. It went really well. We had a good showing and had some good feedback from it, so we're going to keep that going.
That's great.
We did participate in the Rock the Ride Walk event. We probably had five deputies, four deputies and a sergeant, participating in planning and area security, some traffic safety, as well as with CHP in that event. Safety tip reminder, summer's here, and for anybody watching, please be careful on the roadways in Yountville. During the summer months, we typically have a large increase in pedestrians and cyclists in town. Whether we're driving, cycling, walking, we can all work together to keep Yountville a safe place. And I know that you hear this a lot from me, but please, if you see something, say something. I constantly run into that. You are never bothering us, so call us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the council on the report? Thank you. Thank you for being here.
I also just hit my two-year anniversary of being up here, so thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Sorry, no bottle of wine for you. Next, we have a presentation by Upper Valley Disposal and Recycling regarding changes and challenges in the recycling markets. Kristy, welcome.
Okay, thank you.
And if you could just lower that microphone a little bit.
I also brought my general manager, I should say our general manager, Bryce Howard, along with me, so if we get into some technical questions, he's kind of a very good analyst on our staff and can get into more details if someone has a question. So last month at our JPA Board Meeting, which is the governing body that governs our contract, which Margie is the chair of, we talked about changes in the market for recyclables. And so our newsletter also this month focuses on that. So I thought I would just highlight a presentation. It was actually a workshop that I attended at Cal Recycle in June, which involved a lot of the stakeholders throughout the state and country that are being affected by this change in the market. So I just added a couple slides that address what's happening. And honestly, the, one of the presenters was the Institute of Scrap Recycling Industries, and what I found most valuable from their presentation is they really tackled, why is China doing this now? And basically, for the last 29 years since AB 939, that's when we all started recycling at Curbside in 1990, we have had a market for the material. It was kind of a market that existed in the United States, and then over time, facilities and factories started closing, like paper mills and different kinds of plants, and the market emerged in Asia. And so we've basically been sending a good portion of our recyclables to China for the last 20 years. And so recently, the Chinese government has said, we have a new president, and we want to have a green economy and a sustainable lifestyle, just like you have in California. And of course, we applaud them for that. At the same time, California and much of the United States didn't create any infrastructure for this material that they required us to recycle. So with that, the Chinese want to change and get healthier air, water, and soil. And so this basically ban of materials is called the China National Sword, and now it's called Blue Sky. So every once in a while, there's a new name, and the newest name is Blue Sky. So it's a multi-pronged approach, and basically, they're saying, we don't want your refuse anymore. You're polluting our country, and therefore, the first of the year, they banned 24 products that we've been sending them for the last 20 years. So that's changed a few things for us. And the next big thing is that they, they have said the contamination level's got to change, so the materials that we are sending them, they now want 0.5% contamination. So no more odd things in the recycling that we do send them, if in fact, we are able to send them something. And lastly, they would also like to have similar laws like we have, being a sustainable model, and increase their domestic recycling, and someday, they'd like to be exporting materials to other countries so that they can be an exporter of these materials rather than an importer. So this graph just shows, even if you just look at the bars, you don't even have to look too close, but the first bar is January of 2017, and the last bar, the small bar that you see is March of 2018. So those are basically the paper and plastic commodities that they were taking from us, and when you get to March of 2018, that's what they're taking now. So we are... So, we are starting to feel the effect of this. And I don't know how many of you read your newsletter that came in your statement, but we alluded to a little bit of that. So, I just snapped a photo from our materials recovery facility and showed some of that contamination that we receive, that we are working now on an education program. It's really a re-education program, because we're continually educating our community about what to recycle. But now, we're really going to focus on cleaning up the stream, slowing down our line to really pick through the product, and educating with our commercial and residential community about what to put in that recycling container or cart. And obviously, shoes and clothes and coolers, and ropes and belts and things like that don't fit. That's called wishful recycling. It's a term that you'll hear more of, wishful. So, I know this is recyclable, or I know someone needs some new shoes, or I'm sure someone at the MRF could use this, but we're really going to work on only sticking to the materials that are on the sheet. So, we've kind of redesigned the sheet, the flyer that you see, and we've also added the cart placement along with that, and we've tried to simplify it and added some bilingual text to it, and really, we're hoping that our customers are just going to look at the picture and stick to those kinds of materials. And there are no shoes, or blankets, or pillows, or batteries, or computers, or anything I thought in that picture. So, this is just a simple pie chart of what we're currently receiving. We have, in our mixed recycling program, we have about 6% plastics, 42% fibers, that's paper, 2% metal, 31% glass, and 19% residual. So, our focus, residual meaning garbage. So, we're going to focus on that 19%. That's a big piece of the pie that we want to get out of the blue bucket. This is a slide that shows the materials that we are able to move and not move. So, basically, right now, the 19% residual, obviously, is going to go back to the landfill. We have about 3% of our paper that we're having a little problem with, and then this plastic that's heavily contaminated, which is about 2%. So, the only real change to our customers right at the moment is we're telling them to clean up the stream, only put the materials that are on that sheet in their blue cart or their mixed recycling benefits commercial, and make sure that the containers are clean, they don't have food and oil, no pizza boxes with oil, no papers that are soiled. And so, the last thing that we've done is, the plastic bag market is zero. So, we're saying no more plastic bags. This is already a count, most of Napa County, there's a bag ban, so the grocery stores, I don't think are taking plastic bags back either, but we haven't had a market for the plastic bags. So, if you can reuse the plastic bag, I say reuse it, and otherwise, I'm sure we'll still get it in the recycling bin, but we would appreciate our customers not putting plastic bags in the bin. So, this is just more about Cal Recycle, and there was a goal of 75%, which is still in place, 75% diversion by 2020, and the entire state is about 42%. I'm not sure where we're going to be at the end of this year based on the market changes. For us, though, it's about 3%. So, these products that we're affected by is about 3% of our recycling waste stream. So, we're still in a pretty good place. The county of Napa is at about a 72% diversion, and so, we're hoping to stay in that zone. This is kind of what our facility looks like right at the moment. We haven't landfilled anything yet. We are getting close to needing to put some stuff in the landfill, but we are hopeful that maybe some new technology will emerge, or we could use the product as a beneficial reuse in the landfill in between our next cell that we're going to build, where we can use it as a liner. In between the liner, we have to have a space of something there, and a lot of times, we use the sledge from the wastewater treatment plant. We need a couple feet so that the garbage, once it starts getting compacted in a new cell, doesn't puncture the plastic. So, we have to have a buffer. So, we're thinking about using some of this plastic material as a buffer area. So, it would actually count as beneficial reuse in the landfill, much like the sledge does. That's about it. I had a little video clip of, I don't know, it's like two minutes, and it summarizes it really nicely. I just want to say, though, that we are not discontinuing, taking any other plastic material, only plastic bags. We do have a campaign to sticker every blue bin that's out there, so pretty soon, you're going to start seeing stickers on your blue bin that match that flyer that also shows how to set the cart out. Some of the new trucks have, we have a lot of new trucks, we're replacing the fleet, we still have a few more to go, but the arm on the new trucks is a little wider. So, when we get to a household that has carts really tightly placed, we can't get in between them. So, we're asking the customers to do their best about giving some room in between the cart placement. And Buzz, I don't know if there's anything I might have missed.
I think what I took from a lot of this, I'm a resident too, and I have my blue cart out there, and I was a little surprised, and I'm in the business, that I can't put my milk carton in a blue cart. I can't put my yogurt carton in a blue cart. I can't put a lot of different things that I realize now, even though I'm in the business every day, that there's a lot of things we don't use. That the plastic bottle, we can still recycle, but a lot of the other things we can't. The thing that we're finding in our industry, one of the things that is unique about our facility is that we have not automated completely like a lot of other places have. So, we're still able to separate out paper products a little better than a lot of our bigger sister companies you might see out there, like in San Francisco, or San Jose, or Oakland. So, we're able to separate out newspaper, and that's something that's very recyclable still in the marketplace. Where mixed paper is a single bale that they make, and that includes the newspaper, and that's what the industry is really having a hard time moving, is that sort of combination. And we're still able to separate out our paper products a little better. So, our recycling's still a little better here than a lot of other places, because we're a little smaller and a little more flexible. I don't have anything else, if you have any questions. I do think the video that we're going to show, hopefully, is a couple minutes, and I think it's worth watching, it's pretty informative.
Okay, actually, I'll ask you a question. Were you all queued up for the video? Okay, let's do the video then. Can I say, roll the video?
............................................................ Recyclables across Northern California sprint. Along nearly two miles of conveyor belt. Passing through the hands of 36 sorting stations. Wrapping up tightly at waste management, the largest residential recycler in the country.
The city of Sacramento, the county of Sacramento, we're also getting material from other jurisdictions, Woodland, Chico, Redding is coming here.
Now, with more trash than ever before.
This is a turning point in recycling.
The biggest importer of recyclables, China, refusing some waste. Plastics with the number four through seven, such as plastic bags, yogurt cups, and bubble wrap, as well as shredded paper, they all now go in the trash. Which means cities like Sacramento are asking residents to be more mindful of what they recycle, to ensure their waste is still valuable.
We work hard to try and keep our rates reasonable, and more items go to landfill that raises the cost to the city.
China, which purchases recyclables for manufacturing, is also impacting private disposal sites, increasing fees for dumping, because they're making less money. China becoming more strict in the materials it accepts is taking a hit for commercial disposal sites. Materials they normally make money off of are no longer considered recyclable, which means they have to pay money to dump it at a landfill.
Well, long-term, unfortunately, is we have to raise our rates.
So, just like the unsavory potpourri of waste gets whittled down from sorting station to sorting station.
They're in the big cart.
So do the consequences of every clogging blanket, hazardous tank.
We get a lot of electronics, a lot of clothes.
And?
Whatever the heck this is.
In Sacramento, Vicky Gonzalez, KCR8, Green News.
Sorry about the sound, but-
That's okay. Yeah, the visual is rather impactful. I do have, I know I have a question, I think Councilmember Durham does as well, so it sounds like we might have several people with questions, so.
Whoever wants to step up. Can we talk about the green bin real quick? Can the pizza box, if it's not, can my, excuse me, I haven't had a kitchen for five months, so I have to-go containers. But can the untreated to-go containers that have food stains on them go into the green bin?
Our program hasn't expanded to take soiled paper yet. I would like to note, the last time I was here, thank you very much for the letter of support for the county planning department for our expanded food waste program. We did receive, one member was absent, so we had a four to zero vote in favor of our program. We're now going through the air permitting process, and we did receive a $1.2 million grant from Cal Recycle to build an organics blending barn, which we will start. And so, once the blending barn is built, we believe it'll be probably towards the end of 2019, we will add soil, paper, and food waste, all types of food waste. Right now, you can put anything from your garden and any kind of vegetable and fruit, but not like cooked stuff and bones and, well, you could probably put some shells in there.
So, no to the plastics four to seven?
Actually, that's not our program, so-
For us, yes.
For us, all we're doing right now is discontinuing plastic bags.
Oh, okay.
We are hopeful that something will happen, or we can use it for beneficial reuse or something. We're pretty small. We're only servicing our service area, so this material is actually not a lot of our waste stream. We have spent 28 years creating this habit, and it is our goal to not change. And so, we want to continue accepting that material and looking for an alternative waste stream. And if we do end up putting it in landfill, it will be the last ditch effort, but we're hopeful that we'll find somewhere else. It could also go to incineration, it's another option. It'll cost money to get it to incineration, but it is another option. At least we'd be making energy out of it instead of putting it in the landfill.
And in your presentation, you spoke about infrastructure for the business. Can you speak to that at all, as to what you're doing? The reason I'm asking is, what can we be looking for towards the future? Because this is not going to get any better.
No. So, it's going to be a collaborative effort with the Packaging Council. We need them to EPR, start creating packaging that can be recycled. So, this is stuff that is going on at state level. So, packaging council, reforming packaging, so that those producers that are making these packages are purchasing this product back and putting, you know, percent of post-consumer back into their program. Right now, the cost for the raw material is so cheap, they're not doing it, and they're not required. The glass, we don't have a problem, the glass stays right here in Solano County, the Glass Recycling Company, they're purchasing that material from us, so there's not a problem there. PET bottles, which are your water bottles, not a problem there. HDPE, which are your number twos, your detergent containers, or your juice, your milk jugs, not a problem there. Like I said, most of the paper. And so, it's a combination of building new factories, packaging reform, and realizing that recycling costs money.
And I want to say one thing before you step away in support of that. I think, because everybody's complaining about plastic straws now, and then now I'm starting to see the pushback from it, but I think this is exactly the reason, whether we like it or not in California, where people think the government is overreaching, when in fact, it's doing something so our rates don't all go up. So, thank you.
Councilmember Durham, did you have a question?
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. Following on Councilmember Durham, is there a way for you, when you do your outreach to us as your consumers, to not only put what we can do, but a list of what we can't? Because I do think there's information out there, no, you can't do four to seven, but I'm hearing you can. And so, along with that, is it sort of the rule of thumb that if it doesn't go in brown or green, and it's not hazardous, then it goes in the blue? I mean, is there some general rule of thumb you can educate us on?
Well, the general rule had always been if it was a container that held liquid. I mean, that's really basically the foundation of the bottle and can thing. You know, if it came with a liquid or some type of solid or something, that was what you put in the blue bin. So, bottle, can, and then paper. And then we got into the clam shells and the yogurt, and that was really the Chinese that said, "Hey, we can take that stuff." So, we all jumped on it, and that was probably 10 years ago, when we added what we call mixed rigid plastic goes in there too. So, that's even our drip irrigation from our ag industry, and our five-gallon buckets, and our furniture, that's all plastic, and our toys. They said, "We'll take it all." So, we added all those things. We were never processing that material in our own country. So, we went where the market was, and Cal Recycle said, "You have to, you know, do all these things," and so, we did them, but yet, we didn't control the market. So, when we look at our next big shift in our industry, which is the organics ban from the landfill, it's coming very closely, we're working with the state to say, "We have to have some measures in there for market," and helping us create the market, and making sure that there is an avenue and a pathway for this product, because it's going to continue to be made constantly. And so, we have to know that we have somewhere to take it. And thankfully, we live in California, which is an ag state, so we should, along with partnerships with the farmer, be able to move the material. But it's a real concern, because here, we're seeing, we didn't control the market. So, it's going to be very difficult to meet the 75%.
And so, one more follow-up, if I may. So, if you're able to do a list of don'ts as well as do's, for example, the clothing and the shoes, would those ever go in a bin that we put out on our curb?
Probably eventually, some day.
But not now?
Yeah.
Okay.
But not now. And what we can do is, the flyer that's going to go, that came in the newsletter, that was up there, and that will be stickered on your cart and on all the commercial containers, we could do a hanger that says the don'ts. So, when we deliver it, there's a don't, and the next newsletter, a don't. This was a collaboration with the county of Napa, and this is, they wanted it to be very simple and very direct. So, they didn't want to load up all the don'ts. They only wanted to load up the do's. So, I realize-
I know that's a question for another board, I just threw it out for discussion.
Okay.
No, actually, I was asking about, I was going to be asking about the composting, but it sounds like that's in the works.
Yeah, we're on track. It's very exciting.
Very enlightening.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All positive, but enlightening.
Well, you know, with every challenge, something else happens. So, we're hopeful that we'll get control of some more things right here in the state of California. So, thank you for letting us come.
Thank you for the presentation. Are we good, Michelle? Moving on? Okay. We're going to move ahead now to item 9A, our first public hearing, Priest Ranch Design Review.
Good evening, council. Before you this evening is a revised design review application for 6490 Washington Street, which, as you know, is the home of the Priest Ranch Tasting Room. In 2017, April 2017, to be exact, the applicant received design review approval from the town council for several exterior modifications to the building. The town council approved a new sunshade trellis, a new patio access door, removal of a faux stone associated with the Tuscan style for a more modern, uniform stucco finish, metal mesh on the northwest corner, relocation of bike racks, and new signage. The staff report from 2017 was included in the agenda packet for your reference, as well as for everyone in the audience who's interested in staff reports from 2017. The application before you this evening revises this design- this design in favor of a simpler design. The ZDRB reviewed the design, and on a three-one vote, recommended that the town council approve it. The dissenting opinion was related to two specific items that I'm going to mention later as we go into more detail. But for now, I'm just going to review the specific points of this particular proposal. So first, the northwest window will still be removed, just as it was proposed to in 2017, only now, instead of a glass door with side lights, the revised design includes a glass accordion door with matching transom windows. And that's the window that's on the bottom, not the top window. We'll get to that one later. Let me pull out my laser pointer, so you can see where I'm referring to. This area, right there. So, before it was a window, initially got approval to make it a door. Now, it's proposed to still be a door, but one of those glass accordion doors that pulls out. Second, the southwest window currently includes a three-panel setup located here on the very easy-to-see-on-the-screen faint drawing with a door in the middle. The proposed modification now only includes two panels, which is just a door and a window. One ZDRB member did express concern over this design, stating that it created an unbalanced look, but staff didn't raise this as a particular concern, because the design faces inward on the property and is not generally visible from the right-of-way. This base, the applicant will talk more about it, is going to be used for some wine storage, which is why you can't have too much sunlight there. Third, the applicant had previously received approval to remove all of the faux stone and apply in its place a uniform stucco finish. They also received approval for a metal screen wrapped around the north elevation, including a five-foot awning and a wood element. And initially, there were concerns about the awning encroaching into the front setback, which was raised during that town council meeting, but ultimately, the town council did approve it. The applicant, in this application, however, has removed the awning and the metal screen. Originally, they were also proposing to remove the shutters up here, and one ZDRB member did express concern that that modification would result in an overly simplistic design, and it would also be disproportionate, given the size of the new doors underneath. But after hearing this concern, the applicant submitted a revised design, which does keep the shutters in place in order to maintain a balanced look with the doors underneath it. Condition of approval is included in the resolution tonight, just stating that the shutters should remain, and that can be a conversation point for the council if you so wish. Lastly, the application contains several landscape improvements. The multiple cypress trees that are usually there framing the windows and doors are to be removed and replaced with a creeping fig vine, which is already present on the pergola between the buildings. So, of course, the existing creeping fig vine is also proposed to remain there. The shrubs in the front will be removed to make room for those accordion doors that you saw in the previous drawing. And the lavender that's usually here is going to be extended all the way up to the sidewalk, rather than only at the front of the building. The bike racks will still be relocated, just as they were proposed to be relocated in the 2017 approval. Nothing is changing with that. Also, the rose bushes between the curb and the sidewalk will be replaced with an evergreen fountain grass, which we do see elsewhere in town. So, now the time is for the council to discuss this application and to hear from the applicant. Because this is design review of a commercial property, town council approval is required. The applicant does have a presentation that will go into a bit more detail on each of these items, and that presentation is actually included in your council packet. It's labeled narrative for proposed changes, in case you wanted to pull that up and follow along. But with that, I'm here to answer any questions, and the applicant is here to answer questions and give a little presentation.
Okay, thank you. Questions to the staff report? Councilmember Durham?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Steele. So, I'm looking back at our minutes from the meeting where this originally came before us, and I do remember doing this. It said that I asked for an additional condition of approval be added that applicant satisfies staff as to landscaping that is in keeping with the applicant's description of a living, usable lifestyle space, living being plant life. Is it staff's recommendation that the currently, the revised landscape plan before us meets those criteria?
I'd say with the extra lavender that goes all the way up to the sidewalk now, and the installation of the additional creeping fig does satisfy that requirement.
Other questions? Vice Mayor, did you?
No, thanks.
Okay, go ahead and open the public hearing and invite our applicant to come forward. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Craig Becker, co-founder, GM, ymaker of Priest Ranch Summer Swim Line Company. After our approval last year, we went out and got bids, and the plan changed quite a bit from what we wanted versus what we actually got approved. And if we could...
Proceed.
It's not the best view, but if, the one in the corner here, upper right, the little E, the awning that was going to be, that was actually approved, it's five feet, it actually would provide no sunshade. Our current pergola, which is right next to it, provides no sunshade. So, we went out for bids. That little awning came in at like $28,000, which we thought was a lot of money for something that had no utility. And as we went out to bid for the rest of the project, we realized there's a lot of things here that are kind of bolt-on, that, you know, the town wasn't totally into. We were reluctant, but kind of talked into it a little bit. And so, we found a contract that had some great ideas to just kind of take the elements that we have and just clean it up. Smooth stucco, get rid of all the faux wood, square off the entrance pergola, so it kind of has a nice line of sight with the new three-panel accordion door, and just try to focus on the elements we currently have, and just clean it up. So, that's really the whole approach. The elevation on the south, right here, going from, you know, two lights on either side of the window or the door to just one, ultimately, that's to fit the right amount of wine storage. A lot of these tasting rooms, including ours, didn't plan well for wine storage. Apparently, it's a common mistake. And by filling that in, we can build out a proper wine storage that's temperature-controlled. Right now, when we have wine club pickups, which last a couple of weeks, we sometimes have to shut a bathroom down to fit all the wine. So, it's really going to help the flow of the space, and our customers being able to use the bathrooms when they want to. We could plan to use umbrellas like we do now, and in the future. We think the landscape updates will be kind of fit more with that corner towards redwood, or sorry, yeah, red, adding some DG around those plants to make it safer, so nobody's falling off the little sidewalk where there's not enough soil. And in the bottom-right corner of the building, where you can see there's the box, that's the new wine storage. Hold about 1,100 bottles, which triples our current wine storage. We've changed quite a bit of the environment already. Removed the bar, bought a lot of new furniture, had great response from the customers. It's been really exciting. Invite you all to come in and check it out, if you haven't yet. The X's kind of mark what we're going to be getting rid of, in terms of landscape. And you can see the faux stone on the right photo there, the entrance that'll be removed. The faux stone right under the Priest Ranch in the left photo will be removed. More lavender. And this area on the right is where the new, or the existing bike area will be installed. So, that area there won't have any seating. And on the left there is the rose bushes that tear your shirt when you get out of the car. And on the right would be the harmless grasses that we plan to install. And that's it.
Okay. Questions from the council? Councilmember Durham?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Becker. So, I'm still focused on the landscaping. What's your plan to get the creeping fig up and covering some of the building?
Well, we have three of them there now, and train them, just like we did the other ones.
So, you're not going to plant more?
Yeah, there's one more we're going to put in.
Okay, so you're going to put one more in?
Yes.
And then, why are you changing from color in the front to grass?
Well, I think it's more continuous with what's down the street, and we've had a lot of complaints about the rose bushes. People, you know, the way the parking lot or spots are placed, it's not like you can open your door and not hit a rose bush. It happens quite a bit. I think it's a little bit softer look. It's more of a year-round look versus, you know, roses look ugly if you don't take care of them every two weeks.
And on the, you mentioned that you were going to add some DG. Is that going to be instead of the mulch between the sidewalk and the street? Or are you going to leave that mulch?
Well, we could do whatever.
Well, what was your intention?
Down the street by red is DG. And I think it's a little easier to walk on.
It's not DG. It is larger gravel.
Yeah, okay.
But you would be willing to leave it mulch?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The focus is really getting rid of the rose bushes. The focus is getting rid of the rose bushes.
Another question. Councilmember Durham?
Did you say you're removing seating from the front?
No, I didn't say.
Where the bikes are going?
There's two areas for seating right now. We're going to have just one larger one.
Ah, very good. They're just moving over.
There's one on the side, or is that just, yeah, right, that's, so.
That's going to be the bike area.
Yeah, so you're changing, sorry to interrupt your line of questioning there.
No, that's fine. It's clarification, it's fine.
If I remember, well, go ahead and explain your version of, we talked about having congregation in the front and the side, with seating in the side, correct?
Right now, we're just talking about the street front.
I understand. But if the question was, are you removing seating, and you're saying, yes, you're putting bikes there, but you're putting seating elsewhere?
So, all we're doing is, on the left picture right there, you can see where the bike racks are. So, those get removed over to the right, or the south side of our entrance. And the area where the bike path is, is where there could be additional seating.
Understood. My question still is, the seating that you have in the photo on the right, that's going to become the bike parking area, you've already been approved in the previous application for changes. You now have seating capable on the south side, don't you?
We will not, no. This is bike rack area. The chair is there, could go over towards the bike rack areas now.
Okay. So, sorry, Councilmember Durham?
Nope, that was very good. Thank you. That's it.
Vice Mayor?
Hi, Mr. Becker. So, is the seating going to be then in front of the bifold glass doors that will then be open out?
That's right.
So, that's, and will it be larger than the seating that it is, that is available now, or?
Well, only because we're moving the bike racks. So, we're not gaining anything, we're just reorganizing.
I see.
So, the area out in front of those bifolds will just be the front seating area, no longer between us and Protea.
Okay. And then, are you, you have some plants in planters. Are they going to remain?
Yeah, the photo showed they're going to extend out towards the sidewalk.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Muller?
I do. I'm not sure if you discussed this with your designer, and it's one of the things that we might discuss amongst ourselves. There was a recommendation to put the shutters back. With your designer, did they feel that they would add or detract from your simplistic look that you were trying to achieve?
I think the member of the design review is right, that, there's another photo that we have that I believe was in your presentation. The window does look a little lonely over there, so when you put them back, it does look more balanced. It's not a do-or-die thing for us. I think we might just paint them a different color.
Okay, so, and it might change shape somehow to kind of fit with a more simplistic view as well?
Probably not. Probably use the same shutters.
Okay, thanks.
Just treat them.
And then, you're changing the exterior color as well?
Yeah, right now, the exterior color is like four or five different shades. It's a mixed stucco. We're going to choose one of those and just make it clean.
And here, you have the Mesa Verde, kind of a, is that?
That's an example.
It would basically be kind of a...
Not quite as light as Protea. Protea's got that nice white look. The owner's coming back in town next month, and we plan to discuss the color.
So, I guess this is a question more for staff. If we're not discussing exterior colors as part of this request, when are we?
We are under the impression that Mesa Verde was the stucco that was going to be used. A condition could be added that whatever color is ultimately decided on should be consistent to Mesa Verde, not anything too much darker, too much lighter, or for some reason, a shade of purple.
Yeah, we wouldn't do that, for sure.
No, it's, just so we understand, there have been issues in other parts of the valley, for example, where presentation has been given, and then color has changed, and people rightfully are upset, because it's not what we said we were okay with. So, let's just avoid that problem in the future, so we understand ourselves. Not that you've done that, I'm just saying, we have, I have seen it in other jurisdictions, so. Any other questions of the applicant at this point? Thank you. I'll invite any members of the public that are interested to, we don't have very many of you anymore, but if any of you do want to comment on this item, now would be the time. Seeing no one move forward, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and invite discussion by council. Anyone like to start? Sure. Councilmember Durham?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some of this, I have some of the same concerns as I understand the ZDRB had. I think it is a pretty unrelieved expanse of a color we don't know yet. But I don't find anything, I've asked staff where our discretion is, I don't find a lot of discretion in that decision, just because it's not my taste. I do also have concerns about the monochromatic palette of landscaping. Again, I have asked staff, and I didn't find anything that gives us discretion to say we get to pick the color or type of plants. So, I would like for us to find a really good way to get a very solid approval on the color.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
Sorry. Based on the findings that have all come together, I'm fine with all of the changes, except for one. I think that if we're going to move from a Tuscan to a modern, that no matter what you do, here, let me back up. This, I'm sorry, but this building's always been a hodgepodge to me, and it's always stood out as something that was not consistent. Not that there is any consistency on our Washington streetscape, but that really stood out. And I applaud their move to a more modern feel, but if you're going to move away from the Tuscan to a modern feel, I set across the street in my car and out on the sidewalk, I believe the shutters should be removed to move towards that modern feel, and the effects are still the same. So, that's my position on that. And I do agree with Councilmember Durham that it would be nice, I had discussed this before when I was on the ZDRB, but it's been determined that we don't determine colors of homes. We're not an HOA. But it would be nice just to make sure moving forward that it's just a, that you're just aware of what's going up before it does go up. Thank you.
Councilmember Muller?
Well, I also brought up the issue of the shutters, and to me, I still can't see what this building's trying to be. I know it is definitely trying to move away from the Tuscan look, and I applaud that. I think that's, it's going to make it, I really liked that second design. I thought it had a lot of striking features. So, I just can't see that, the shutters seem to be kind of just an afterthought left over. So, I agree. I think that I'm not going to push that they be included in the resolution. And I also agree with staff that we need to have a similar color, then if that's what was proposed, I will certainly let staff use a ministerial action if it's close, that they can approve that. So, again, it's the paint and the shutters, to me. Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Well, it's obvious that Tuscan is so over, that's for sure. I have sort of the same feeling, except that, to me, this Mesa Verde looks like a very light green, which I happen to like. I think it's very attractive, especially with the dark brown wood that you have chosen. So, I would like it... So, I would like it to be close to the color that you have represented here. And as far as the landscaping, I'm a little concerned too, that the landscaping is going to be a little, no drama at all. And maybe that's what you're going for. But anyway, otherwise, I certainly understand, all around you, everyone is dumping the Tuscan look and going for more modern, so I can understand you're wanting to do that. And I agree with my colleagues, I don't think you need the shutters. I think the shutters, unless you wanted to try for something else, because the ones that you were going to keep sort of have a Tuscan feel. Anyway, that's how I feel about it, but, you know, we, as far as I'm concerned, it's fine.
Thank you. I think I'll be anti-shutter also. Because if you are, I think Counselmember Durham put it correctly, if you're going to eliminate those elements, eliminate the elements. I'm also envisioning the broader streetscape, what's happening across the street, much more contemporary. When the Tuscan look was more faux than real, that was where it broke down for me, because it could have had, I think, a pretty authentic look. Whether it's out of style or not, I guess I'm not, I'm not getting architectural digest enough, but I also liked the uniqueness of the previous design, because we have some elements on Washington Street that stand out for a reason. But I also get the simplification and kind of a classier, maybe, modern take on it. So if you're going to commit to that, I agree, just kind of commit to that. I totally understand what you're saying about the roses, having been attacked by them before. But also, we have heard from other businesses along the streets, when you put something in those, we shouldn't call them planting areas, if we have parking right next to them, it becomes very unreasonable to get people in and out of them. So that, I have no problem with that. I think it's, it's easy if there appears to be an oversimplification of the landscaping outside, you're going to notice and you're going to do something different about it. Because you're going to want to present your business the most positive way you can. I don't mind minimizing it as you're minimizing everything else. I do care mostly about the exterior color. Because we do have to be aware of how that matches. You've got Protea immediately next to it. We have a new complex going in on the other, the north side of the driveway. So, some level of compatibility, I agree, I'd call this moss or sea foam or whatever the box, the Crayola box says these days. I do think that's an elegant look. I don't know if I would have argued that it was going to purple, but, or Nathan, as you said, I think you're in the right track with the color palette. And so I can, I can support all of these changes, as long as these are the changes that we end up seeing. So, I support the ZDRB's recommendation with the one adjustment of the shutters. So, is there any further discussion? And if not, is there action to be had? Question, yes. Counselmember Durham?
But it's my understanding, we can't tell them what color we want.
Because what they presented includes Mesa Verde, you can, rather than be specific in saying it must be-
Within those parameters?
Color number 215 (48), you can say Mesa Verde is an approved color palette for this development.
That can be approved ministerial by the planning department and not have to-
And if we want that, that can be a condition added to this resolution, saying that a color shall be consistent with that.
Thank you.
So with that additional question, is there a motion by a council member?
I pressed the button.
Okay, so what is your motion?
My motion is that we adopt Resolution Number 18-3501, approving the design review for exterior modification to the Priest Ranch Tasting Room building for the property located at 6490 Washington Street, accessory parcel number 036-082-027, with the removal of the requirement for the shutters and that we adopt the color palette as presented within very small variation approved by staff.
That's Gary. Okay, Counselmember Doorman?
And I don't really know the proper procedure for this, but I could second that if you would consider adding that it's mulch rather than DG out between the sidewalk and the street. Maybe that's not proper.
Yeah, that's, which can be considered before the original motion.
So right now, there is a motion that's been presented. Is there a second to the motion that's been presented?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there further discussion about that? Or is there a second motion to be presented?
Okay, so, I'd like to make a substitute motion of what Councilmember Muller said, and adding mulch rather than DG between the sidewalk and the street.
To be clear, that would be another condition added? Okay.
So there's a second substitute motion, or a substitute motion? Is there a second to the substitute motion?
A second.
So, the discussion I have for you is why the mulch, if the roses are going away, versus DG?
Sorry, my microphone. Because as I look down our street and I see more and more DG and gravel or pebbles, I think the mulch is softer and I think it makes it more attractive and walkable for the town, not so much expanse of just gray or brown.
And the reason I second it is, you have all of the expanse of Branch Market directly next, relatively within steps of this as well, which would just continue that look and, to me, instead of breaking it up. And I think, well, I'll leave it at that. So, I don't want to see that expanse going down Washington Street.
Nathan, the new modified or approved surface for the seating area, do you remember exactly what that is?
I believe that's remaining DG in the seating area.
It's just a different footprint than-
They're just moving the chairs over and moving the bike racks over to the other one, but all that's DG right now would remain DG as far as I have-
I thought there was some question about that because of the way it was going to run up against the sidewalk and whether there was going to be a lip there. Am I the only one that's, am I making that up? Okay.
You aren't the only one that has said that. I don't recall seeing any action that reflects that from a 2017 approval, but I can go back and review that.
So, I'm just curious if the 2017 approval included a change in that surface?
I didn't see that, no.
Okay. All right, so we have a substitute motion and a second to the substitute motion. Is there any further discussion about the substitute motion?
I'm absolutely fine either way, so I can certainly go with bark.
Okay. No further discussion, we'll vote on the substitute motion. Michelle, you have that? That's what we've got here, is the substitute motion?
Yes.
It looks like it. So, go ahead and vote, please. That passes unanimously with the substitute motion, so that the original motion is moot. So you have your request approved. And you don't need the shutters, after all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those casts has worked all three times, don't jinx it. Because we have two more hearings. Okay, next up, our next public hearing, introduction and waiving the first reading of this municipal code amendment.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you an introduction and first reading of a revised accessory dwelling unit ordinance that addresses second floor ADUs and total building height. And this was first presented to you at a public hearing in June, where we received feedback as to the proposed changes, and we incorporated additional modifications based on that feedback. What you'll see is, the changes that you will see include limiting ADU building height to 15 feet or one story, except for the four exceptions that are listed in the ordinance. One is that it's within an existing legal two-story space of a single-family dwelling. Another, that it's added above an existing legal, single-family dwelling. The ADU is contained within an existing legal one-story garage as a garage conversion. Or, the ADU is added above an existing legal one-story garage on a property that already has an existing two-story, single-family residence. We clarified that the 50% rule applies to both primary and secondary dwellings on the property. We included second-floor decks into the elements that should consider privacy impacts on neighbors. And we included a clarification that all heating and cooling controls, the kitchen, the restroom, the washer dryer hookups, all be located within the unit itself in order to keep that from being located in a shared space. And lastly, we've included a provision that would require landscaping in the odd case there was not landscaping on the property. So, that is the ordinance that's before you tonight.
Thank you. Other questions? The staff report, Counselmember Durham?
Quick question. The 50% rule for second stories, yours, I got a little confused. So, we have the 50% rule. This will still apply if the home is one-story and wants to go up second story for the ADU, it will apply. This will come into effect as well, even for the ADU unit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselmember Doorman?
Thank you. So if there is a two-story residence and then they want to put an ADU on top of an existing garage, are they capped at the height of the residence, or can they go to our full allowable height?
They cannot go to full allowable height, based on existing code provisions that limit second floor over a garage, and it keeps it at 24 feet or a story and a half. It's a lower height limit than you would have for the 28-foot primary dwelling.
Thank you, and thank you for making all, for hearing everything. Thank you.
Other questions? So I do have a couple, follow-up on that one. So, is there a possibility of a one-story home and a two-story garage?
No.
So you cannot build an ADU on top of a garage if the ones, if the home is, if the primary residence is a single story?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question, too.
Okay. I have a concern about, again, I'm trying to figure out if this is a legitimate scenario or not. I'm concerned about two-story homes then allowing two-story, second-story ADUs, and we're not identifying the setback proximity here. So, one of the concerns that we've had in a previous project was five feet from a property line, putting a second-story ADU on a detached garage. We're not addressing that here.
No.
Can we? Because we can't.
Right, those provisions are still in effect. It's in another part of the code that says if you have a detached garage that's setback five feet from side in rear property lines, you can do a second story. Our code already limits that to a maximum of 24 feet rather than 28 feet, and these new provisions will only allow it in the case that the primary dwelling is sec, already second stories. But the five-foot setback, the 24-foot height overall, are not being changed.
And that's driven by the new state law?
State law.
Then, the privacy impacts, I find this language here to be waiting for a legal challenge. When we say, "Second-story decks must be located in design utilizing techniques that lessen the impacts on the privacy of adjacent properties." And, maybe Gary can help out with this. I just feel like the definition of lessen the impacts of the privacy is going to be completely subjective. Is there a way to make that not so subjective?
So which section are we referencing here?
I'm looking at the staff report. Sorry.
It's in the code 17.116.030A9.
Yes, so, this is a provision that was in the town's ADU ordinance before the state law was changed. This was maintained in the revisions that went in in late 2017 and also in earlier this year. Privacy is, on its face, a subjective factor to consider. However, if staff is applying it in a way, using objective reasoning, such as the placement of the deck not facing the adjacent property or the like, it's still arguably objective and it can be allowed. There is a little bit of room here to move, but yes, you're right. It is the more, the most subjective aspect of this ordinance, although I do think it is so defensible under state law.
Would you suggest any different language that would be more appropriate? Or should it be left here and then be interpreted if challenged in a particular circumstance?
So I think it's, if staff is still applying it in a way, as I mentioned, for decks, placing it and making a reasoned decision as to where the deck goes in approving the application or denying it, that would be my recommendation. If there's going to be a change to the ordinance, I would say, remove this section altogether and simply say, "Deck shall only be on this side." That is the other approach.
On the side meaning potentially internal facing only?
Correct. Or however the council would like to address what your concerns may be.
Yeah. Sandra, what are your thoughts about that idea?
That would work for us. It does say that decks, it talks about the orientation of a deck and one that is toward the existing onsite residence, so that's how we apply it. The idea would be to pick an elevation that had the least privacy impact for the property, although there certainly is subjectivity. And if you want to draw a bright line where it's on the inside elevation, facing their own backyard rather than neighbors, easier to apply, certainly.
That's something I would have the council consider. It just seems a little vague, not by any fault, but I would want an applicant to know upfront. You can't put it on the backside facing over somebody else's fence or on the side facing somebody's fence. It can intrude on your own privacy, on your own parcel, because you're making that choice. So that's something I would consider. Whether we remove this section altogether or modify it, I would leave that to your discretion, Gary, really. If you think one is better than the other, if the council has that palette. So, that's, that's what I've got for now. Yes, Councilmember Muller?
I have a staff question, I think. There's a couple places in here, you're pretty specific about the ADU going above. And I've actually run into a few newspaper articles, and I think the City of Napa actually had this issue. So if somebody came to you and said, "I want to build an ADU, I have a one-story house, but I don't want to take off the roof and I've got all these like cool little, you know, things up there. Can I lift this up and put an ADU underneath?" Would this preclude that, or have you thought about that?
No, we haven't thought about that. But that is a technique that is used from time to time and it elevates the total height to two stories, and provided the 50% rule allows that, I see no reason not to allow it. A building right across the street over a, on Humboldt Inn.
Right.
And Yon is an example of a building like that.
Yeah, because Napa, I think they ended up really thinking about that and doing it, because it used to be a problem because they had so much flooding. Now the flooding is mitigated, for the most part, so now they can do that. So there's a couple places I didn't, my highlights went away, we actually say "above." And I don't really have to change that, except if that's going to be a technicality-
Well, I think it's within the spirit.
And depending on what the rest of the council feels. So that's my only comment, but I also like this deck facing inwards, too. There are my thoughts.
So you're saying, what's in the spirit?
I think raising a one-story, single-family to accommodate a floor below is within the spirit of allowing a two-story. The idea is to establish the examples when it fits the context and fabric of the neighborhood. So it doesn't matter if it goes above or it's lifted and placed below.
So, I'm worried we're getting into the public hearing part of the conversation and not just asking questions about the staff report. So, what I'm going to do is just formally open the public hearing, so we can continue to have this dialogue as part of the public hearing. So, doing that, Gary, do you have a comment on, should language be considered, or is that on a case-by-case basis?
The language on the privacy concern, or?
No, the concern, the hypothetical of raising an existing one-story to put an AD unit under, whereas the ordinance language references over or above.
Well, I guess one thought on that would be, an ADU, at least under this, and as the state law requires, is limited to 1,200 feet or 50% of the square footage of the original house. So as a practical matter, I mean-
It would have to be smaller than the upper-
How would you do that? I don't know.
Well, no.
Maybe it is possible, I don't know.
It could be part of gutting the unit and establishing two units, and when you lift it, it provides that opportunity.
So you'd enlarge the upper unit at the same time?
Well, you carve out a portion of that upper unit and give it its own access- Well, you carve out a portion of that upper unit and give it its own access, and a portion of it could be, obtain access through the primary dwelling that is, has a new first floor down below. I can see how it could work within the spirit of this, even though the language says "above."
Yeah. So I don't think the language clearly allows it, what this is discussing, just because it does expressly say "above." Of course, I think you could lift it and perhaps create part of the above area as the ADU and have the new under area and upper. So I do think there's some leeway in here to allow what, what you're envisioning, but if the council wanted to create express language allowing it, I think that'd be helpful, too.
Would, would that express language just be as simple as "above" or "below" the existing primary residence?
Yeah. I think that would work.
Because it's talking about an existing.
They want it to go underground.
One or two-story, which would no longer be the one or two-story.
Let's pull up the language. What section?
It's number eight.
Number eight.
Subsection A8, is that what you're looking at?
Mm-hmm.
This is the sound of reading.
It's a good point. It does use the word "above" a garage, so it's kind of hard to have the garage beyond the second story and meet our definition.
That's not what we're talking about, though.
When you talk about.
Talking about raising the, the primary residence to put an ADU underneath it.
So I think it would just be adding the word "below" in the third line, added "above" or "below" an existing legal, single-family detached dwelling unit, and not adding it.
That would work.
The second above. So yeah, I think that would work.
Because it would still be governed by the height limit.
Yes.
But may, there are two places where it says "above."
Yes, and I believe the second one talks about a detached garage.
Yes.
And that's what Steve was referencing, so it would not apply there.
Okay, so only the first "above," based on council's.
Correct.
Okay. Construction technique could be used to raise the garage and reestablish the garage on the ground floor.
And then you'd essentially be creating an ADU above the garage at that point. So I think that's already.
In the spirit.
Captured within. That one's already captured within the ordinance.
Okay, let me reread this.
I think we've covered the majority of the unlikely hypotheticals. I think. This is a first reading. If we find out that there's something imminent, then maybe we can revisit it. So Sandra and Gary, you're both clear on the two proposed language changes so far. One has to do with the privacy, the other one has to do with just that one easy word change, "above" and "below." Correct?
Yeah, if I can make.
And I know there's further discussion to be had, I'm just trying to keep us clear.
On the privacy issue, I think one way to solve the potential ambiguity and subjectiveness of what you were speaking about earlier is to change the word "may" to "shall" in the second sentence of that section. So the intent of this is to address privacy concerns, but if you limit what techniques can be used, you're removing the discretion from what, what can actually be imposed. So here it says, "These techniques may include," and then it has a non-exhaustive list, and that does give discretion to staff to decide what conditions to impose to address privacy. If you include the word "shall" there and may, and include whatever procedures you think would help address those privacy issues, it will require staff to use one of those things, and in that way, it would be objective.
Which section?
Nine. Nine.
A9.
A.
Second sentence.
Got it.
So could you reread what you propose for modified language in A9?
Yeah. Starting in the second sentence, I would propose changing the third word "may" to "shall," so it would read, "These techniques shall include use of obscured glazing," or "Shall include one or more of the following: use of obscured glazing, window placement above eye level, orientation of windows, doors, and decks towards existing onsite residence or screening treatments."
Okay. That would, that would address my concern, that word change.
But then are we requiring the orientation of windows only toward the interior?
No.
Just the.
Well, he added additional language, "Shall include one or more." Gary, what was it? One or more?
One or more of the following.
Okay.
So it doesn't include all, you don't have to do all of them?
The way I noted, it was written, because you have the comma, "and decks towards the existing onsite residence," so that part doesn't carry over to the window.
Any members of the public want to comment on this?
I only think.
You gotta do it up here. Yeah.
On the "above" or "below," it seems like you'd want to clarify that and say, "Above ground, above or below existing." Because "below" could mean going down.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Stephen Miller.
Stephen Miller.
Identifying you for you. If that's the intent, I mean, I don't know that we're necessarily opposed to someone who wanted to create a subterranean ADU.
I mean, correct, you're talking about a height limit, so if it's going below, you're not affecting the height limit, because you're still going to look at how high is the structure that's above ground.
Basically, we're talking about somebody who would build a basement after the house is already there.
Which is entirely possible. I mean, there are homes that do have, you know, completed basements. They're not typical in this part of California, but they could exist.
Right. Okay. Any further discussion by Councilmember Mueller?
Thank you. On the deck, I have a question. So let's say you have a house, and there's a lot right here. So they put the deck, like the garage is here and the main residence is here. Where could they put the deck? Because if they put it here, it's facing an interior yard, but you can see the five feet over the back fence. Would the screening then kick in as another mandatory element?
Yes, it could, under the proposed language.
Okay. Thank you.
I would say that the intent is that there can't be, the primary view be into someone else's parcel.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I have a question. It seemed that, could they also add a deck on an existing one- or two-story home?
Yes.
To accommodate the ADU?
As part of it, yes.
So that they would have to use screening then as well to, if they, if the ADU part was then the part with the deck?
The way I read it is that the preference is to orient the deck inward on the property for the segments that push the side or rear guard boundaries to neighbors, some type of screening technique on that, that leg of the deck.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, let's not get into what types of screening techniques.
Yeah.
Is there any?
Okay.
Further discussion or motion on this item? Councilmember Mueller?
I can make, I'm ready to make a motion. Would you like to hear a motion?
Yes, please.
All right. I'd like to make a motion. We approve ordinance number 18-474. An ordinance of the Town of Yountville amending Yountville Municipal Code Title 17, Chapter 17.116 regarding second-floor, second residential units, ADUs, and Title 18, Chapter 18-36 regarding building height with the following two changes on, under Section 17 dot 116 dot 030, general conditions, A8. In the first sentence, we change, we add "or below" following the word "above." And in Section 9, in the first sentence, we.
Second sentence.
Second sentence, we change the word "may" to "shall include one or more of the following."
And was that a introduction and waiving of the first reading?
It certainly was. Thank you for reminding me.
So are we clear, Gary, Sandra, on the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you for that discussion. Next, public hearing, item 9C, Home Investment Partnership Program.
Good evening. The California Department of Housing and Community Development has announced the notice of funding availability for the Home Investment Partnership Program, and that program allows funds to be used to assist low-income owners whose primary residence in need of repairs, improvements, or reconstruction that are necessary to meet federal, state, or local building codes, and for the correction of all health and safety deficiencies. The town was lucky enough to be granted two home awards in 2014, one in the amount of 500 for the home award and another 330,000 for the Cal Home Grant. Under those grants, we assisted 24 property owners in making these improvements, and, but those grants have since expired. This would be an opportunity to extend that program to additional owners in town if we're, if the award is granted, and would allow us to continue these types of programs. We did hear this last week, that a similar program that we had applied for through CDBG, we were not successful in getting those funds because we could not demonstrate the level of, of need. Those are more competitive programs, and based on the fact that we did receive two home grants in 2014, we feel hopeful we might be able to extend it again. And we are seeking your authorization to go ahead and submit the application.
Quick question. Fiscal impact, yes. Currently budgeted, yes. What is the fiscal impact? Do we know?
It's included in our contract with Housing and Authority of City of Napa, and it's an hourly basis to do these in addition to their base contract. I don't know the exact dollar amount.
Nominal.
It's nominal.
Administrative cost.
Mm-hmm.
For staff time.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions before I open the public hearing? I'll go ahead and formally open the public hearing, invite members of the public. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and invite a motion unless people want to talk about, this is a really good opportunity to ask for some money to help our residents.
I'd like to make the motion.
Go ahead.
I love this, and I'm so glad we're going to do it. Thank you. So I move that we approve Resolution Number 18-3502, authorizing submittal of an application to the California State Department of Housing and Community Development for funding under the Home Investment Partnership Program.
That's the easy one.
That's right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Please vote. That also passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Let's hope we get that grant funding. All right. Thank you.
Those. Easy ones.
Let's go to our first administrative regular item, General Plan Land Use Map. And should we, once we get to options, we'll discuss how we're going to act on that. Okay.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you a resolution that would authorize staff to proceed with the proposed general plan, or the draft general plan, land use map, and associated development standards that have come out of the envisioned Yountville general plan update. And I'd like to make an important clarification, that we are not seeking the town council's approval of the land use map tonight. That would be premature. The environmental impact report has to be conducted and approved prior to acting on that map, which we would envision at the same time the final general plan update is approved later this year, early next year. So what the action is, is to authorize staff to proceed with some of the different land use scenario that came, scenarios that came out of the public workshops and meetings to be analyzed by our environmental consultant in preparing that EIR. It's important because the consultant will identify different alternatives to the project, and so what they're looking at are the development potential of some of these changes. So I'll give you some of the background on the meetings we've held thus far, and we've had about 25 meetings over the last year and a half. Those, of course, started with the informational speaker series. They have included many meetings of the town advisory group, commenting and giving direction on existing general plan policies and how those should be modified. We've had three community workshops, two town council study sessions, and meetings of the boards and commissions. And at each of those meetings, we explored changes to land use that may make sense for Yountville over a 20-year period. So we really pushed the community to consider changes, and it's looking at changes, given the fact that our footprint isn't going to change, given the ag preserve. And so we're looking at very limited opportunities where we may see greater infill or greater development, or a better way to meet our housing obligations under the state obligation. So, so we, so as I say, we explored many different options. Some of those did not receive community support, and those are now off the table. The most notable one would be the North Agricultural Parcel, where we asked the community whether they rezoned that to a residential use or other use. That received really no support from the owners or the public, and so that's off the table, like I say. We also explored concepts such as exploring, increasing the FAR for the Toyon Terrace Neighborhood, if that would allow families to stay in their homes by doing additions. But as we got into crunching the numbers, we realized that most of the houses in that development have available FAR that could be used for additions, so it, it didn't really merit consideration at this time, where that hasn't been fully utilized and there is sufficient growth space. So the changes that we are including in the land use map and the development standards are as follows. The first one is to rezone the two vacant residentially zoned parcels on Humboldt from Old Town Commercial, Old Town Historic, or Residential District, to residential scaled commercial, on the condition that the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet, meaning that the two parcels would be merged, on the condition that two second-story dwellings are part of the development, and that any retail office or service uses exclude wine, or alcohol or restaurant uses. So that is one land use change. A second land use change dates back to town council action in 2012, when the Hotel Yountville expansion was approved. And what that approval did was left the original half of Hotel Yountville in the residential scaled commercial zoning district, where hotels are not permitted uses. And this would change that designation to planned development, consistent with the other half of the parcel, and allow, it would give, it would give the hotel the assurance that they could continue, consistent with the recent town council resolution in 2017 to amend the development agreement. The other modifications are for development standards, and we explored allowing limited three-story buildings in the primary commercial zoning district to the west of Washington between Humboldt and California. And again, these had some conditions that would have applied. It would only be permitted if it provided some level of community benefit, such as affordable housing. And that is important because it gives the town an additional option to meet the, the housing obligations imposed by ABAG and the state that we don't currently have under the existing ordinance. Any potential three-story building would further be limited by draft policies that address the compatibility of the development and require the scale intensity of design to not only be compatible with the neighborhood, but the town as a whole and its scenic surroundings. And the new proposed rules on building massing that require massing techniques to mitigate, mitigate heavy or bulky massing that's really incompatible with the Yountville aesthetic. Those could include such things as modulating building mass, allowing partial upper stories rather than a full upper story, and requiring some type of step, setback, or wedding cake type form that would lessen, lessen those impacts. As, as it will be evaluated, if this is perceived, if this is included in the environmental impact report, they would explore different options for that three-story height, and we would later, after adoption of the general plan, come back with public hearings to really identify what is acceptable, and referring, as I mentioned, to some of those new general plan policies that will likely be included in the general plan. One of the other development standards was to allow an increase in FAR for uses that increase business diversity and offer benefits to residents, and excluded from that were more wine and restaurant and cannabis uses, so we would be looking at. we would be looking at some type of retail. It's already provided for office, but also allowing it for services. There are two other items that I'd like to mention and include in the environmental impact report, and they were for items that received some level of community support, but there wasn't enough support to add a policy to rezone it now or to change these standards. The wording is to consider them in the future. One is for the six North Washington parcels that are zoned residential, and there's a proposed policy that says to consider amending the land use map in the future to rezone those parcels to a small-scale commercial use, such as office, boutique, retail, or live-work, and the community did reject lodging in those. It may be when we consider those that we're discussing only the bookends, the most northern and southern ones, or all of them. Anyway, by including it in the environmental impact report, the consultant is able to review the different alternatives. The other one that we'd like to include in there is to consider amending the Vista condominium master plan in the future to allow second stories, provided that the rules conform to the rules on massing. And that, again, came from many of the public workshops and public input, where originally it was scaled back to the interior ring. Later discussions said, maybe we're not ready to do it now, but it's an option for consideration in the future. So even though those are more tentative, we'd like to have those reviewed by the environmental consultant. You will see that environmental impact report at a future date to analyze these impacts, and it'll be reviewed concurrently, really, with the draft general plan when you see it later this year. So that is what we're looking for. Again, I'd like to just call your attention to the fact that we're not approving any of these items tonight. You would be authorizing their further study and environmental impact report, so you have more information on which to make a decision later. Oh, and one other thing. I've heard from a couple of you that there may be a preference in not approving it by resolution. That is something that we can do tonight, approving it simply with a motion and a vote that you do or do not support these items.
Okay. I have one quick question on the first of the three bullet points you have here. I think that's where it was. There's a reference to no type of restaurant could be, maybe it was the second bullet point.
It was the first one, to require or to prohibit alcohol in restaurant uses.
Right. Do we need to define all restaurant uses? What I don't want to find out is if they evaluate a full-service restaurant in the EIR, and then we have somebody that says, I'm only doing a limited-service restaurant, and that might be an exception. Can we just say all types of restaurant uses?
Yes, we'll clarify that with the environmental consultant.
And I wish you could say it in, like, all caps and bold, that we're not adopting any of this tonight. It's authorizing further analysis through the environmental impact report.
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to say it a couple more times probably before we finish. Okay, other questions of the staff report? Vice Mayor?
I did want to make sure that we called out the fact that we were talking about to permit three-story buildings on the west of Washington Street only.
Yes, only.
Okay.
It does state that.
Yes, but in the conversation, I didn't hear that called out, and I wanted to make sure that that was called out. And I don't, we don't have anything in the staff report about the six parcels nor the Vista condominiums. There's nothing written in there.
No. In evaluating what the environmental consultant should look at after doing the staff report, I realize that they should do items where we're considering it to provide the basis and the analysis in the future. Should we wish to go back, we can refer to the environmental impact report rather than having to draft new sections or amend that report. Thank you.
I see.
Councilwoman Dorman?
Thank you. Thank you. So, starting with the two added suggestions tonight, Vista condominiums and Washington rezone, looking at that, is it fair to say that even the things that are included in the staff report, when we talk about they receive community support, some receive more, some receive less, this is just a full menu of things we think should be further analyzed?
Yes.
Okay, and so...
They were items that received enough community support that it's worth exploring future before anything else is eliminated.
So we are just looking for a chance to offer the most breadth in continuing to analyze what will work for us?
Yes.
And one thing that I did notice when we talk about three stories on Washington, at the beginning of our journey, we didn't really separate railway, what I'm calling behind railway, and what I'm calling across from Bouchon. Is it possible, but at the April community workshop we did, will the EIR continue to separate those because they had different community support, by my reading? Is it possible to keep those separate?
Well, I think you're talking about the behind railway end is not on Washington Street, technically. It's a parcel behind.
So I guess that's a very good question. What does west, on the west side of Washington Street, capture? Is it both those areas?
It captures everything from California to Humboldt, and so I think it's important that the environmental consultant look at the maximum development potential of three-story, but also consider scaled-back alternatives to that and see if different environmental impacts apply. I wouldn't get specific as to certain locations because we haven't had enough feedback to know what would be approved or not. We know that it's something less than maximum development potential out there, though.
So if the three stories west of Washington is grouped for purposes of the proposed EIR, would there still be opportunity to go back to the April model that was presented that separates it into two distinct kind of project areas? Because there is a difference in quote "community support" for those two things.
I suppose yes, but I think it should be analyzed more generally in the environmental impact report. If it does move forward, there would be language in the narrative section of the chapter or a more specific policy language itself limiting it, is what I think will come out of that environmental impact report.
If I could, yeah. Councilmember Dorman, the answer to your question really would be, if you're looking at the larger area, and then you have the community discussion, and they say, well, we're really only interested in doing it in a smaller subset, then that is what you would ultimately approve in your general plan, if that makes any sense. So you start with, as the director was talking about, where's the widest area that we might consider that? That doesn't mean that that's ultimately what would be in the end. There could be no three-story, or it could be refined to one of the two areas that you've ordained.
Okay, thank you. That sounds very helpful. Thank you. And then...
Before you get off of that, I just want to add to that as well. The whole point of the environmental impact report, it's not approval of the land use. It's to analyze, and it might analyze, on Washington Street, on the west side, right up against the sidewalk, has this type of impact that may or may not be mitigated to visual effects, for example, or lighting. Then the parcel removed from Washington Street behind railway end, just again, as a hypothetical, would have a different set of impacts that would be evaluated, even though they're all on the west side of Washington Street.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
I also wanted to say, one other reason staff is encouraging the council to look at the broadest range of potential impacts that have been identified and discussed, it's also the most cost-effective. Because otherwise, if you were to decide to do something three or four years, five years down the road, and it wasn't addressed in your EIR, then we would have to do an EIR at that point in time. So it's really, from that standpoint, a very cost-effective and prudent way for us to benefit from the funding structure that we currently have.
And so that, I think, brings me to my final question, is, we talked about an EIR. I think I know what it is. Could you very briefly tell us and our residents what kind of information we will get about these various options we are presenting? How will it help us?
Okay, so the general plan will include policies that may increase development potential, and so all development projects have to be reviewed for whether they have significant environmental impacts. An environmental impact report is a way to do that. They look at about 20 different environmental impacts, from water impacts, impacts on biological resources, lighting, aesthetics, a whole slew of things. And they'll look to see if there is a significant environmental impact. They'll look at alternatives to see if those alternatives have environmental impacts. And even where there are significant environmental impacts, they may suggest ways to mitigate those impacts. Our general plan will be a self-mitigating general plan, which means that if any impacts are identified and they are included as policies, the policies would have to address how impacts are addressed. You know, and giving you examples, I skipped over some of the most important ones are transportation impacts, greenhouse gas emission impacts. It looks at all environmental aspects of a potential development.
Any additional questions? Any member of the public? Okay. No.
Stephen Miller, sorry, I didn't identify myself last time. Question, why are, if, to Steve's point, including everything in the environmental impact report, why wouldn't you look at the east side of Washington?
Because there was no community support for that, so it's essentially off the table.
Okay.
The only exception being those parcels you've already designated for consideration, the few...
For rezoning. We're not looking at three-story height, though.
Right, no, but rezoning, yes. There was virtually no interest in any significant changes in Old Town, I think, basically residential at least. Okay. Is there any further comment from council on this item?
Just one thing.
Yes, Councilwoman Dorman?
Because you made a couple of statements about the six parcels on Washington Street, and I just want to also make, to add on to that, a lot of these online surveys show support for those properties. I mean, I looked specifically at the November 2017 one, and actually, half of the people said more than who said they didn't want anything, more even people said yes to boutique hotel. I'm not saying a hotel is the answer, but I'm saying that I think this is a viable option to move forward. So it's just to piggyback on what you were saying as well.
And there are additional, you've listed several of the environmental impact report criteria that's evaluated, noise, traffic, light, water use. So if we run into issues with traffic or parking, all those things would be evaluated, considered, long before anything happens. Yeah. Vice Mayor?
My question is, is it possible that we can approve moving forward on some of these and not all of them? Because I can agree with almost all of them, but there is one of them that I just cannot agree to.
So let's be clear that we're not approving anything. This is to evaluate the impacts of these issues, and if the impacts are unsatisfactory to us, we don't move forward with it. But we want the, we're suggesting the expert evaluate them.
I cannot support having residential parcels, under any circumstances at this time, rezoned as commercial. So there's no point to me to approve it to be part of the EIR study. So I can't do that. So does that mean I have to vote no on everything? Because I do approve of everything else.
Well, it depends on the motion. If the motion is to accept all of the staff report, yeah.
I think you've made your statement. We're looking for direction. So if the majority of the council would your statement that that's the only area, then, I mean, I think that's noted for the record.
Is there any further question or comment about this before I ask for motion? Is there someone prepared to make a motion?
I pushed a button.
Okay.
So I am not going to make a motion that we approve a resolution, but I am going to make a motion that we approve the staff report as identified with all the items, and that we're also verbally put forward regarding the six properties on the east side of Washington and the Vista condo second-floor issue. Include all of those and produce in the EIR that will then allow us to make further decisions based on their impacts on, it's just going to give us more information as we proceed. I guess that's that.
We'll leave that part off the motion.
Okay, we'll leave that part off the motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Any further, yes, Councilwoman Dorman?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I have one question before we vote. To the vice mayor's point about the Washington rezoning, I've looked at this so much, but I seem to remember that part of the community question was, it would, I think the word was, require residential on the top. So we would not really be giving up residential units. That's not what we're looking at. We're looking at adding workspace below. Am I right in that memory?
They'll be looking at different options for boutique retail or professional office and/or where it's a live-work requirement, where part of the building is still residential. So those will be all part of the alternatives explored by the consultant.
Okay, thank you.
So it could be a home occupation work permit with living quarters as part of that same parcel.
And those will all come back before us?
They will, yes.
We're not approving any of this yet. This is just in response to the envisioned feedback. This is for analysis by professionals. Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Is there any further question or discussion? Okay, please vote. That also is a unanimous approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You get to move out of the chair finally. Okay. Item 10B.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, we have had about a year's history and work experience with the council's recently approved art fee program. And in our one year now, we're making some recommendations for you that we think are relatively straightforward and simple to clarify some of the administrative process. By way of background, this applies only to commercial projects, and it's 1% of the commercial project valuation. And the payment is made at the time of deposit, or if you will, when they pull the building permit. So the clarifications that we're working with are that there are three options for the applicant. One is to direct that the 1% go to the public art fund managed by the Arts Commission town. Second is to place art that is valued at or greater than the 1% valuation. The third option is a hybrid of placing art at some value, but not quite as much as the fee amount, and then they would get a rebate, if you will, of that amount, and then the balance would stay in the art fund program. A couple clarifications we want to make is, one, it's a deposit. So it is paid at the point in time when they pull their building permit. So the town has it. It puts us in a very secure position for achieving the outcome. And then the other element that we wanted to clean up is to clarify that if they are going to place art, that they needed to have their approval before the Arts Commission prior to the certificate of occupancy. So it's just a few streamlining measures to allow it. It doesn't mean that they have to have the art placed by certificate of occupancy, but the town needs to know what they're planning to do and the concept, and the evaluation of it has to be made by the Arts Commission prior to certificate of occupancy. Certificate of occupancy is a trigger point by which we then, if they haven't placed or approved the art, then the funding goes to the art program fee fund. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
And before we get any further, so we don't forget, Gary, you wanted to clarify that there was a typo title on the ordinance itself.
And that's my bad. Gary and I actually have the note, and I have here, cleanup that there's a... Gary and I actually have the note, and I have here cleanup that there's a title mix-up on the ordinance header in the staff report and in your action items, the, the right language is there. What is showing on the screen is the correct language.
Correct.
So, I have to own my own mistake, so I will own that one.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Okay, questions of the staff report? Anyone? Councilor Dorman?
I think this is for our town attorney, and I have discussed this with both him and town manager Rogers. On section 060B, like boy, where it talks about, excuse me, appraisal or evidence of the value, I have asked if it would be all right to add independent appraisal or other similar evidence of the value of the proposed artwork, and I'd just like for the town attorney to confirm that would be all right to add should the council so decide.
So, is that amendment to section 060 specifically?
Yes, and number B.
All right.
Letter B.
So, that would need to be added to this tonight. I have just now realized it's not actually in the draft order that's before you, but yes, you could also, as part of this, amend that section this evening. That would not be a problem.
And then, one other suggested change that I've also discussed with the town attorney is 070, again, B, where it talks in the first sentence about must be submitted to the Arts Commission for consideration and approval. I have asked him if, if it would be acceptable to change that to approved so that the actual art is approved prior to the certificate of occupancy being issued. And again, I know that's a council decision. I'm just, I'm asking Gary to confirm should the council decide that, if that would work appropriately there.
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, members of the public? Nope. Further discussion, action? Anybody? Councilor Dorman, maybe make that motion? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce, make a motion to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance number 18-473, amending chapter 17.177, public art program, to clarify options to comply with ordinance requirements and timeline for submittal of application to place art with the changes suggested to 17.177.060B of the addition of the words independent and similar as discussed, and to change in point, in section 17.177.070B, the word in the first sentence, change approval to approved.
Is that clear enough, Carrie, for your understanding?
Yes.
Second?
Motion and a second, as soon as the screen comes up. Please vote. Thank you, that passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Next up, and we're introducing and waiving readings here. This one is the actual taxicab permit ordinance.
All right, Mayor and council members, before you tonight is an ordinance to comply with recent changes in state law. As you probably can imagine, there's currently a tension between traditional taxicab companies and more recent companies that are entering that market, including Uber and Lyft. And the taxicab lobby has successfully, had the legislature and the governor to sign this bill. One of the things that it does and that requires a change to the town's municipal code is it limits the circumstances that a local jurisdiction can require certain permits, including business licenses, from taxicab companies. Only those who have a substantial, are substantially located within the jurisdiction can require this. And so, this is to prevent a circumstance where taxicab companies driving through four, five, six jurisdictions technically would need a business license from all of them. So, there's one section of the municipal code, 5.24.100, that did require a business license of every taxi company regardless of whether or not they were substantially located. That's been changed, and other amendments to this section to make it clear that only if the taxicab company is substantially located here, primary place of business, point of origin is located in the town of Yountville, will those requirements apply. So, it's a, it's a pretty straightforward change, and that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the staff report?
I have a comment.
Hold on. Questions from the audience? No? Council discussion? Councilor Mueller? Oh, wait a minute. Okay.
I didn't, I didn't quite understand, Carla Yates, right, excuse me. I didn't quite understand this, but how would this affect, like, if somebody here wanted to go to San Francisco Airport? Or would it?
It wouldn't unless the taxicab company was substantially located within the town.
So, so if you wanted to take Uber from here to Oakland Airport, it's no, no big deal?
Right, but under the previous provisions of the municipal code, under your scenario, they would technically be required to get a business license.
In each county? In each county?
Everywhere they're driving through, and definitely everywhere they're starting or stopping in.
Thank you.
But this only pertains to Yountville?
Correct.
And that only applied to taxicabs and not Uber and Lyft, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
So, that's why the governor changed?
Well, the ride shares don't exist locally, I think, and that's probably the loophole they got.
Correct.
So, this would be a taxi service that lived and breathed here in Yountville would be required, but others would not.
Exactly.
Because it's a local business, then.
Correct.
I understand.
Yeah. We don't know that yet. Okay, so, any further discussion?
I just want to make a comment because I just can't pass this up. It's, it's so interesting that we were talking about taxicabs, and when Yountville was first formed 53 years ago, this was one of the first 10 amendments, or first, you know, resolutions that was passed because we had 40 taxicab companies. There couldn't have been more than one cab in a company at that time, and they put a ban on it. So, here we are today, even though we don't have any taxicab companies, still talking about it, but I just couldn't pass it up. It was one of the top 10 53 years ago.
Does that mean you want to make a motion?
I'd be happy to make the motion that we, let's see. I'm going to introduce and waive the reading, waive the first reading of ordinance number 18-475, amending chapter 5.24 of Title V of the Yountville Municipal Code regarding taxicab permits.
Is there a second? To read?
My motion button came back. Oh, don't tell me where.
That's my fault.
Oh, okay, good. All right, all right, all right. I thought, we don't want to jinx this. Take your time. It's been perfect so far.
Now, it's got the second button, the second button, let's...
I'm in a motion and second.
We don't have a second yet.
I'll second.
Wait, it's about the button. It's about the button.
Yeah, there.
Okay, so please vote. There we go. That motion passes.
Should last us another 53 years.
Okay, moving on to our next item for consideration, town manager employment agreement.
Yes, Mayor and council members, before you this evening is a resolution increasing the salary of the town manager. As you all know, his performance evaluation was recently completed. He received a 4.6, exceeds expectations out of five. His current employment agreement states that salary can be increased by resolution and not requiring a separate amendment to the employment agreement. This is very similar to the resolution that was brought to you just about the same time a year ago. It does three things. It increases base salary by 2%. It also grants a cost of living adjustment of 3.5%. His employment agreement states that whenever a cost of living adjustment is given to other management employees, the same cost of living adjustment will be given to the town manager. 3.5% is what was given to other management employees. And then, it also grants a one-time performance bonus of $7,500, which is in line with the employment agreement, which states that that is the performance bonus that is allowable if it exceeds expectations, performance evaluation of 4.0 or higher, which was the case here. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And one clarification about the bonus, that does not go toward pension.
That's correct.
Calculations.
Yes, so it's, it's non-perceval, as it's called.
Right.
One-time payment.
Right. Any questions from the council?
No.
Just so the public understands, we've gone through multiple meetings and discussions, so it's not like we're just coming up with this tonight, but this is when we're bringing this forward for consideration and possible action. Any members of the public have any comment? Seeing none? I'll entertain a motion or further discussion. Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. On the discussion, I would just ask that at some time we think about putting a future item, an item on a future agenda about the bonus issue, because it is not perceval, and therefore, it might be a good way if we could maybe look at increasing that so that there is a way in extraordinary times such as this last year was, maybe it gives us more flexibility.
In terms of a maximum?
It's not before us, tonight. Yes, in terms of a maximum. Thank you.
I made the motion to approve adoption of resolution number 18-3504, increasing the salary of the town manager in accordance with his employment agreement. With our thanks for a great job.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Well, we can, go ahead. Did you hit?
I hit second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Further, just, I have a feeling it's more comment than discussion, but go ahead.
I would say it's, yes, comment rather than discussion. I just want to, since we're still on this item, just personally thank Steve for everything that he's really done for the, the town of Yountville, and it's been a pretty extraordinary year with fires and issues that we've had up, up at the Veterans Home, and just everything he's really done for the town of Yountville. Thank you, so.
Well done, sir.
That sentiment is shared by all of us.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Well, we'll find out because we're about to vote. It may not be all of us.
I guess this will be the...
We need a roll call here? No. There is a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. That is also unanimous approval. Congratulations, Steve, and continue, continued success, continued hard work. Thank you. Next, we will consider the appointment of three individuals to our zoning and design review board. And for folks that are familiar with this process, typically, we would have already voted, and a calculation would be presented by the town clerk. We chose to wait until now to vote based on the extensive, extensive list of applicants in case there was any additional public comment this evening. I see limited public, including one of our applicants here. So, if there is a staff report prior to our vote, I know there'll be one after the vote, but if you want to consider just explaining what we did earlier tonight.
Yes, I can. Thank you, Mayor. The town was very fortunate in that we received a total of nine applications for three positions on the ZDRB. Of those positions, one we could not accept due to it being filed late, and two others had to withdraw their applications due to life changes. And so, we had a remainder of six applicants, and that really is a remarkable turnout for anyone commissioned to have that many good applicants. Do you want me to go through that? Council interviewed those applicants earlier today, and at this point, council would like to discuss those appointments. We have two terms that are full three-year terms, and one term that is completing an unexpired term of a member who resigned, which we heard from earlier this evening, and that is a one-year term. Those dates are on the screen for people to see.
And the expectation would be the top two vote-getters would have the full terms, and the third highest would receive the partial term.
Correct. And we also received a substantial amount of emails in support for various applicants, and council has received all of those, and copies are in the public binder for viewing.
We had, I think, at least 10 emails that came in. Just a quick mention, I think the town clerk would appreciate this. In the future, we'd like to encourage our residents to use the...
Oh, I love it.
...e-comment that gets the, the comments directly to council and the town clerk, whereas several of us were forwarding emails to you, and you were having to navigate getting triplicate of a lot of things, so...
Yes, so if I could expand on that, we through our Agenda website, on the town website, we have a feature called e-comment, and when I push out the agenda on Thursday after 3, the e-comment feature is highlighted. So, when you're on the screen for the agendas, on the far right, it'll be hyperlinked in blue. You would click up, click on that, and you would sign up for Speak Up. They would ask you to enter your name, and then you enter your comment to council, and it's received on each of their iPads and all staff who have iPads. And then, that way, we're not printing and redacting. All that information is there at their fingertips, so thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Sure. So, what I'm going to suggest, and I want to hear council feedback on this, to give the town clerk some time, I'm going to propose we have a five-minute break after we vote, and if we have any further discussion, let's do that now. If not, we can go ahead and vote, tabulate during that five-minute recess, and then come back with the results. So, is there any further discussion at the council level? Councilmember Mueller?
So, are we going, so we have two full-term openings and one partial term?
Yes.
So, is the first and second choice...
That's what we do, we just went over that. The third place person would get the partial term.
Oh, okay. I missed that last part.
That's okay, yes.
Okay, I thought that was still going to come.
So, in your ranking, when you vote, the first two will get the two full three-year terms, and then the third person would get the one-year term approximately.
Exactly.
And we're only looking for three positions, so that's why it's being tallied in that manner.
Okay, thank you, again.
And we'll be filling out all six spots.
Yes, all six spots, please.
So that we get the full tabulation.
Yes, please.
Is there any further discussion by council? Any members of the audience? I think, Stephen, you've had your say, so. Let's go ahead and recess for five minutes. We will tabulate and be back, please, whenever you can get to that. So, I'm assuming we're still on. I see the light going, so.
It started.
And I can hear things. Okay, the clock has gone away. So, we are about to receive, I'm trying, I'm filling right now, Michelle, I'm filling. We're, we're about to receive the final tabulations on the three openings. I'll take this opportunity while Michelle finalizes this to thank all of the applicants. It was a very strong field that we had to consider today, so I encourage, on behalf of all of us, for those that may not be selected this time, to continue participation, whether it be on a board commission or through the envisioned Yountville process, stay engaged, and you never know when there will be other opportunities coming forward, so. Is that enough time?
Oh, yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. I'll save my other 10 minutes for another time.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you to the planning director to, for verifying my numbers, and what we have is Stephen Miller ranked first, Lynn Pena ranked two, Michael Zagorsak ranked three, Sandra Fagan four, Martin Ford five, and Warren Pinkert six. So, of that, Stephen Miller and Lynn Pena would be appointed to the two three-year terms, and Michael Zagorsak would be appointed to the one-year term as stated above on your screen. So, with that, I would ask for a motion to approve. Okay?
Is there a motion to approve as presented by the town clerk?
So moved.
Jeffrey?
I'll second.
I have to change that.
Well, I was hitting it, hitting it, and it stayed up.
I know, but it was...
I'll second.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay, please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Stephen, congratulations to you. You are here in the audience, for those that don't see that. Again, thanks to all of our applicants. We look forward to working with Lynn, Stephen, and Michael on our ZDRB. So, thank you again.
Hi, Joe.
Staff informational reports. I've asked our Public Works Director to give us an update on the PG&E solar panel project at the Community Center and how that may have related to the partial power outage as well in town.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure this evening to talk for a few minutes about the solar array located in the parking lot at Community Center, Community Hall, and the work that's been going on there for the past, well, over a year now, but most recently in, over the past month and a half or two months. So, PG&E, after reviewing that solar array, realized that their equipment didn't have the capacity to, to manage the power coming... the capacity to, to manage the power coming off the solar array along with the other utility needs that were in the neighborhood, so they had to upsize the transformer, which is what you might notice just north of, of the Community Hall, little parking area there where Samantha Hall and our Parks and Rec Director often parks in the morning. So that was set last week. This week, PG&E was onsite pulling in the cables and tying in the old transformer to the new transformer. That was a planned outage for most of the day. When they went to turn the power back on late last evening about 5:00 PM, that went okay, and then it appears that there was a related shutdown for some part of town. Oak Circle and the Mobile Home Parks were affected for sure, so that same little part of the grid that has been having some challenges over the past couple of summers and one, and one notable instance in the winter. The good news was PG&E was onsite because they were doing all that work, trying to get their transformer cut in and turned on, so they were able to respond in a fairly quick fashion. It did take probably two hours after that shut, shutdown to get everything turned back on. Apparently there were three outages. So there was the planned outage, there was the outage that happened when they restored power to the Mobile Home Park and the Oak Circle neighborhoods, and then there was one additional customer who was attached to a remote transformer, excuse me, that was also out. So three outages total, one planned, two unplanned. As of about 7:30 or 8 o'clock last night, everybody had been restored. And just a little bit more about the solar arrays. So this is a part of a project that's been ongoing for the past four years. There's an array that's been installed and generating power out at the wastewater treatment plant. There's a, an array at the pump station, and then the final array that they built is in the parking lot at, at Community Center, Community Hall complex. So that one is not able to generate power yet. There's one more small shutdown that will affect just the Community Center, Community Hall complex area. That's going to occur, we just got confirmed today, July 30th. So they will do the final work on that little piece of the project, and then shortly after that, we will have a ceremony to turn on the power from the solar array and energize the complex with, with that solar power. So we're looking forward to that. It's been a long process and we will let people know when that's going to happen and have a ceremony to celebrate that. For those of you who may have been paying attention, PG&E recently announced that they're, we're going to increase rates this summer. The really elegant part of that, our, our power purchasing agreement, the solar array system that we have installed, is it fixed costs for the 20-year period that those solar arrays are installed. So while we didn't see an initial drop in prices, we will continue to see a flattening of our increases that would ordinarily come along as if we hadn't had those arrays installed. So it was a smart move and a timely move. So once they get that power cut over, then we'll be in good shape and it will be less of a shade structure and more of a power generating structure.
And a shade structure.
And shade structure.
Very good. Thank you for that report and the update.
Absolutely.
Any other informational reports? Steve? No? We're good? Okay, council reports. Napa County Flood Control, Water Conservation District, we adopted the 2018-19 budget at the last meeting. Napa Valley Transportation Authority will meet tomorrow. Councilmember Dorman and I will be attending that. Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, do we have anything more than the presentation from earlier?
Yes. At our last meeting, we approved the annual rates and the, we approved a 2% increase on the Upper Valley Disposal Service. That's the company that picks up our garbage. That means everybody will probably see about a 50, 50 cent increase. We also approved a 3% increase at Clover Flats, so if you take trash, dump truck up there, it'll be going up 3%. And let's see, that's it for Upper Valley, and I'll be going to Calafco on Thursday and Friday.
Okay. League of California Cities, Vice Mayor, did you want to report on your committee?
Yes, in June, I attended the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee meeting in Sacramento, and one of the best things that came out of it was that the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in Wayfair opens up opportunities for the states and local jurisdictions to collect additional revenue from out-of-state sales. The implementation discussions are underway in California, and there could be an effort to adopt conforming California legislation before August 31st, end of the legislative season.
Councilmember Dorman, you had a committee or just general executive forum report?
I did, thank you. So this was my first time to attend this particular conference. I was really impressed with both the breadth and the depth of the programs offered. I think, and it was the mayor, the vice mayor, and I, I think we got a lot of real-time application. There was a Calper CEO who talked to us a lot about the pension issues. They're looking at both cutting expenses and increasing, trying to increase return on investment, both of which would be good news. We had a cannabis update. We had a workforce and affordable housing update and ideas. We had a discussion on the, on some possible redistricting issues and some voter behavior. And then in the breakout sections, sometimes we'll be in our separate ways, and I think there were two or three that most of us ended up at that talked really helpfully about how to better engage with our residents and how to better engage with each other. And so I thought it was just really a good couple of days spent.
I would agree. I think it was one of the stronger forum session lineup that I have attended for the last several years. The one additional breakout session was about wildfire aftermath and prevention. The vice mayor from Santa Rosa was there and a lawyer who really spoke quite smartly from a, more of a scientific perspective on wildfire prevention and policies around the state, so that was also timely and helpful. I would also add, from my league Board of Directors meeting, I was selected by the board to be the, the next second vice president for the league, which will be formally ratified by the General Assembly, hopefully, at the annual conference in September. I think some of us will be going to that down in Long Beach. Also, I wanted to recognize fellow North Bay Division Mayor of Nevada, Denise Athas, was appointed to the Board of Directors, as an at-large member. And I wanted to recognize Vacaville Councilmember Curtis Hunt, who's not running for reelection, but he's been a very valuable member of the North Bay Division and a strong supporter of, of us here in the Napa Valley. He'll be leaving the board when his term expires later this year. So I want to recognize Curtis and Denise. Two things of note also, the tax bill that has been discussed, there was a title, something like tax fairness and accountability. There were other names for it as well. It was going to be very detrimental to local government, requiring a two-thirds vote for any kind of tax or fee. That was withdrawn after a compromise deal was struck with the governor, and so there is a large sigh of relief from the league. And reinforcement of support for Senate Bill 3, which is the $4 billion measure that would raise funds for affordable housing, veterans' homeownership programs, infill infrastructure bonds, and it would include $1 billion for Cal-Vet home loan programs. So that's one of the bills that we expect to be seeing moving forward, and you've already addressed some of the, the key sessions that we had. So I think there's a real strong partnership that, that the council here in particular and others from Napa County have with the league. We get great information, not only from these forums, but on a regular basis with the advocates in Sacramento. So I appreciate the input that we've all been able to give in that regard. Vice Mayor?
I would like to just add that I've been in touch with the Vice Mayor of Santa Rosa, Chris Rogers, and Councilmember Dorman and I will be meeting with him to learn about some of the prob, how they've handled or are looking forward to handling some of the problems that they encountered during the fires. And he gave a really brilliant overview of what had happened, and I'm looking forward to learning from him. He was very generous to say, come on over, so we'll do that.
Great. That's the league update for now. One other thing I was just going to mention, I'll be, I was asked to speak along with Catherine Hayward from Visit Napa Valley to a group of about 40 Chinese delegates that are coming to the Napa Valley. They've been out here for several weeks already in the North Bay and South Bay, learning about technology, economic, agricultural issues. They are coming up here to learn more about our tourism-based economy and the agricultural aspects, wine industry, et cetera. So she and I will be presenting that to that, that group at the CIA at Copea Thursday morning. So that ought to be interesting. It's always a challenge when you have a presentation that involves interpreters and translators, yes. But anyway, so that's what else is on the agenda. I did want to call out Samantha and the team that puts all the music in the park events together. It's, it looks like they're larger crowds than we've even had any year before. I'm sure the warm weather helps. When it doesn't, when we don't have a hailstorm right in the middle of one, it, it, it helps. But did you want to speak to those, Samantha?
No, thank you for calling that out. Yeah, we've had larger crowds consistently so far this year than we, we've had in the past, so it's terrific. People are finally figuring out that we want you to fill in the step area in the amphitheater, that it doesn't just need to be one, you know, row of people in there, so they're filling in more and it looks, you know, fuller because of that. But we're getting a lot of great feedback that people are really enjoying it. We did, Karen got one quote from me on Sunday from people who go to them in Napa and, as well as St. Helena, that we are, we are the best right now, so.
Yay.
That's what I strive for. Yes, it's going really well. Thank you.
Thank you. I did want to also recognize last Saturday for Bastille Day, Bouchon Bistro and the entire Thomas Keller Restaurant Group team that helped put that celebration on. In particular, the money that they raised for the Yountville Elementary School in some of their activities, including the annual dunk tank. And it turns out, you want to be first, not last, in a group of seven.
In the dunk tank.
I'm just, I'm just murky is all I'm saying. Murky. So I have to put my request in earlier next year. But it was fun. There were a lot of kids. It was great to see, and I haven't heard the amount that they raised, but it's going to go to the elementary school, which is a, a great cause. I don't see any other business, I don't think. We have no closed session. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to our next regular meeting, August 7th at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Oh, we have to keep the streak alive, aren't we gonna? No, we're not gonna.
That's okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night. Thank you.